Okay, let's go ahead and call the eighth quarter and take roll.
I think the clerk is gone.
Clerk is gone. Anybody volunteer to?
I got it. I can reflect back at the clerk a couple of sessions with. Dan Kater.
Here.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Lisa Hadeen here.
Kyle Latch.
Here.
Teresa Moos. Vince O'Brien.
Here.
Superintendent Collins.
Here.
And we have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have two sets of minutes to approve if they could be consolidated into a motion. Does anybody want to bring a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion on either the organizational meeting from January or the December 10th regular board meeting? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And a motion to approve the bills payable. So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You know, pay the bills for more time. Motion to approve charitable donations for the second quarter. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a big thank you to all those donating.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the quarterly review of student activities. Which is quite long. I suppose that's a good thing in and of itself.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we get to get to our favorite part of the meeting, the good news.
Very good news and Mike was able to have two students who said, yeah, we'd love to present to the school board. And so Mike, I'll turn it over to you to do some introductions and let these students tell us about their Prism magazine presentation. Mike?
Wonderful. I'm going to talk very briefly, but this is Avery Marshall, who's a senior at Hastings High School, and Katie Rocha, who is a junior. And they work closely with the Prism Literary Magazine. It is a student-run organization and it's a self-funded organization and they'll tell you a little bit about that. This was an idea that was started for students to have the opportunity to submit works of art, whether it's written or artwork, and they'll tell you more about that, about seven years ago. And it was started with a parent who had the idea to provide this opportunity. And we'll turn it over to Avery and Katie.
So I'm Avery.
I'm Katie.
And this is my second year as one of the editors. We have four editors. She is also one of the editors.
So two of our editors are, we focus on the submissions and putting together the magazine. And then the other two editors are sales.
So they focus on in the spring when we, when we print the book, they focus on getting the sales up and getting it out to the students and staff and the community members as well.
So basically Prism is the school's literary art magazine. We take submissions from all high school students of pictures, drawings, paintings.
Collages, anything that you can put in the book, basically.
Stories, poems.
And it's just a really great way for students to express themselves and like share their abilities with the school and the community. We accept, we, everybody is welcome to submit. It's not like a selective group. It's just, I mean, it's really interesting because you can open the book and look at the table of contents and be like, oh, I didn't know that that student, like, I didn't know they could draw. I didn't know that they like wrote poetry. Like, it's just, I mean, it's kind of a fun way to bring people together and to showcase some of our talent in the high school.
This is a wonderful, wonderful project and I think ever since I've seen it, we love it.
It's so much fun to do.
It's so, it's so cool to have a voice for a platform for acknowledging and showing some of these creative talents that you guys practically participate in.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's just really interesting because we, when we select them, we try to do it like anonymously. So we just kind of like go through all the submissions and we're like, like, we really like this one. And then we select them and then we see who, like, who actually submitted it. And it's just like, whoa, like, I didn't, I wasn't expecting that. And it's just, I think that's just a really great way to showcase things and.
How do you go about, you know, sales and marketing? Do you just kind of each year guess, well, this is what we've sold in the past, so we're going to make that many because we know we can sell about that many?
Well, each year we print about 150 because that's just what we've done each year. And it's just what we have been able to sell. And then Mr. Johnson will buy, or typically will buy 50 for the school's classrooms. So it's in like, like, art teachers have it.
English teachers and just a variety of classrooms.
So it's available to students. And then we also focus on selling at choir concerts, band concerts.
Conferences.
Conferences. That was a big, a big sale for us this fall. And then also at lunch. So like, if you're eating lunch, you can come up and buy one. And we also have them available in Miss Moan's classroom.
Well, that's a big time commitment when you're, when you're at all those places to do sales.
It's spread out over like a month and a half a month. And sometimes it'll leak over into the next school year, but we always, we always do it.
We always get it.
Exactly.
How much do you charge?
Five dollars a book.
Wow. I would totally want to buy one.
Yeah, I remember. I think you guys should sell it for graduation.
Yeah, we, um, we looked into that. I think it was last year I talked to Mr. Majeski about it, but we weren't sure if it would like interfere from, yeah.
That's true. And if one person starts selling something, even though it's overly good, somebody else might start selling something.
But for where we sell and like how we sell and how we advertise, it seems to be working sometimes. Last year we did the TD Studio was nice enough to let us make a video. And we put up posters in the high school and make flyers. And really, we focus on art teachers and creative writing teachers or English teachers in general. And we try to generate submissions from them and have them encourage their students to submit their works.
What's the ratio of submissions to what ends up in publication?
Um, it kind of depends on the year. So last year we admitted most of the submissions because we had.
A short list?
Yeah, it was kind of a.
You have a set number of pages you're trying to fill in.
Yeah, exactly. And, um, but we, I mean, we were happy with how it turned out.
Oh, yeah.
But, um, so we had like a higher amount of visual art rather than written. So it kind of depends on the year, but most things do get in. It just kind of depends on the content and like how, like, there's one artist, I think it's Catherine McCord. She has, she's amazing, but she has, she like submitted so many. So we try to make it fair and so like each person doesn't, it's not like showcase, like Catherine McCord featuring, you know.
There's four pages for Catherine.
Try to spread it out with our, with who gets in the book. If that answers your question.
Yeah, it totally, it completely does. And then does it come down to the editors to make that decision? How gut-wrenching is that?
It's really, really hard to decide. And especially because we, the editors, so last year it was myself and Britta Johnson. We were the head editors and we spent like a week actually designing the book and putting it, like, making, sending it off to the printer. And that took a significant amount of time, but it was so, like, so exciting to be like, we're done. This is our baby. We're sending it out into the world. But, um, it's, I mean, it's hard. We try to make decisions. We, um, it's not just the editors. We have like meetings and we invite everyone. Anybody can come. It's an open group, but the editors traditionally have just made out the, like.
The final decision.
Yeah, exactly. But like, so we'll kind of in the end decide if we want to put a submission in the book, but everybody is welcome to.
Have an opinion.
Yeah, have, participate in the discussion.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So it's kind of fun to see, you know, what everybody likes and who's rooting for what.
Yeah.
I like the fact that Mr. Johnson does buy 50 and purchase them because I think it comes back to the, the main point of what you said earlier. That way every student in the high school can open up and say what you said earlier. Wow, I didn't know they had that talent or I didn't know that was their interest. And I think that's a great way to get that word out about student strengths that you might not see on a daily basis. So I like the fact that we do that and Mr. Johnson knows that.
Can you talk about the role that Mrs. Moan plays for you two?
So Ms. Moan, Sarah Moan is our advisor for Prism.
So, um, are you like talking about how she really just kind of butts in and out when she wants? So it's basically.
I heard Mike say that.
Very true. It's, it's a student, like, it's a self-funded student, completely student-run with student submissions. So it's basically the editors like deciding everything. And like if we, like, we're stuck, like, at the beginning of the year, I was like, where else should we like advertise for submissions? And then she's like, well, you could do this, this and this. She's kind of like.
She's a great person to just bounce ideas off of.
Kind of like our counselor for Prism. So she, um, she lets us use our room and she lets us use her, like, her resources and her ideas, but it's basically us calling the shots and putting everything into action.
Have you ever had a controversial call on whether she's something in?
Um, yeah, sometimes it's, it's kind of like, it's kind of awkward if one of the artists is in the room and you're like, um, I don't think that should go into the book because we have something like that already. Or, um, one of the things is that we can't use, nothing with like lyrics or other people's, like song lyrics can't be in any kind of art.
Completely original work.
Yeah, it has to be completely from you. So we, that was one, last year we like really liked this. I think it was just, um, just a sketch and it just had like the smallest little, I think it was like a button on a shirt and it had like a song lyric and we couldn't put that in so, because it wasn't their work. So that can be difficult to deal with, but otherwise, I mean, we're, we work really well together and it's a positive environment to be in.
And do both of you want to go into the arts?
Um, I've considered being, I really like publishing and I think that, I mean, I would definitely like to do that in college. I mean, I'm a senior, so I'm trying to think of like how I can involve myself in my next environment, which is kind of scary. But, um, I think that that's something that I would definitely be interested in. And I've always been very passionate for art and literary things, so.
Cool.
Well, I also have like a passion for art and stuff. I don't think I could see myself in a career as publishing or anything like that.
Well, thank you for your leadership and thank you for coming this evening and sharing with us and spreading the word as well. Very much appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, as well.
Enjoy the books.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You going to bill us later?
That's fine. I'll be happy to throw out five bucks. And then there, if you're missing anybody there, two messages.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are.
Next up, your report.
Yeah, three things under the superintendent report. One of them is self-funded insurance update. And I know that Scott is on our self-funded insurance. I think it's just good and for sure in our first three years of being self-funded, that about every three months I bring a report back to you as award of kind of what we're seeing. Because this, this is a really important part of the direction that we're going. This is, this is big money. So anyway, I tried to put up for, we see a lot more than this. We see lots of other information, but I think, do we have a laser? Yeah, that's fine. I think.
I can point to the stuff at the.
If you, the annual and the monthly up there, I'm not going to go into that, but if we go right down into the columns, you know, the amount that we're funding on the left-hand column or the amount that we were expecting that we're kicking in is that column. So we were estimating, okay, these are what we think our monthly expenses are going to be. Then you go out to the right-hand side and you start seeing in black what we've had so far. Month of July was the first, first month, 68, 9, 65. And they tell us that that's very typical and in, in July, a lot of people aren't thinking about going for their annual physicals or checkups, et cetera. They start thinking about getting back in that routine in August.
Plus, that was a transitional month. So that's the run-in from, people are still on their old insurance and claims haven't hit yet. So they were really counting on that. That first month, you see the expected reserve jumped up to 527,074. That first month, that was really a key. They were very, very happy to see that what they were predicting came true there because that really got us off on the right foot.
So we got off to a great start and you'll, you'll hear the word lag, or we hear it all the time. So it's, the lag is what are the expenses that we're going to be, that are going to be forthcoming yet? So when we started it in July, we had a little bit of a lag. But then we know that when we go, when all of us go to the doctor in May and June, those bills are going to lag into July later on. So the bottom line is this, we got off to a, a great start. As we've been going through, our expenses for all of us have been coming in less than what we've been setting as a revenue in the pot. We do know that we're going to get hit with this projected lag at, at year end that will offset some of that. But basically, overall, we're doing very well. When it's all said and done, will we have $558,000 as our starting nest egg? Our goal is to build it up to 2 million, 2.5.
2 million included the leg though, so if you take 2 million minus the 92, it would run something.
I actually remember 2.5 is what they were talking about. That included the lag.
Yeah.
And the lag on that would be if we would ever, eight years down the road, we, we get out of self-funded. Well, there's, even, even if you say, okay, we're done July 31, well, there's still going to be, if someone goes to the doctor on July 30th, that bill is going to come due, you know, later on. So that, there would be that lag as well.
So we've had very good news overall. But if we have a child that's born, a child or two that's born with some very tough issues and all of a sudden they become a $200,000 or $250,000 cost, that, that will all of a sudden have an impact.
But I thought there was some kind of cap.
There is.
It's a $200,000.
It is a $200,000 cap.
Yeah, but still, you, you absorb a couple of those and.
It knocks your reserve.
Knocks your reserve, yeah.
And that's why we want to build up reserves. So if we have years where there's some bad cases, then we have the reserves for that.
Did the wellness dollars ever come through the way people thought they would or anything? I know that was a.
Good question. I'd say we're still working on it.
We have the credits. It's what can we spend them on?
Okay, yeah. And it's just different.
It's more stringent on what you can spend those time.
There's some, there's some regulations over what you can spend them on and what you can't spend them on.
Because Deanna was telling us about its personal coach, give it a while.
And one of the things that we can spend them on, we're just not seeing value out of.
Okay, yeah.
So we're still trying to maneuver around that a bit.
But we have a big month coming up and it'll be eventually then a big month for the board. Because in February, when we meet, we'll come in here as a committee and you as board members aren't on that committee. And so the committee will talk about, well, what should we raise our health insurance increase for next year? You know, in past years, we had to wait till Kim would travel down to Mankato and we'd meet with our insurance pool and all of a sudden she'd come back and it'd be 12% as the expected rate. Or 10%, or 11%, or 8%, or 6%, or 13%, or whatever it would be.
Or the year it was minus 2 that I called you. I never called you.
Yeah.
I was kidding before. Can you believe it? It's a minus 2.
So now we control that. We'll be looking at these numbers already in February when we haven't really had a full, you should really have about a full 15, 16 months. And we're going to be trying to project, so of course, you know how the committee, well, Scott's on it, I'm on it, Kim's on it. I think from the board, that's all that's.
Yep, and then some teachers.
And then staff. We're all, the good news is I think we're all on the same page. We're pretty conservative and we all have a good understanding. But then that recommendation will come back to you as a school board and you'll have to, and so say yes or no to what that percentage is. But definitely you know that when I come back, I'm going to definitely guide that committee to be safe in the first two years. And so our next board meeting then, we'll have more detailed information to show you on why our committee believes that we need to raise, keep it at 6%, 5%, 8%, or whatever that might be. So dental insurance is, as you look up there, we're still seeing very good news on the, on the dental insurance. And.
It's a lot more cut and dried than anything on the medical side.
Yeah. You don't expect huge expenses to come in on the dental side. So we're seeing more stability like we thought we would. And the good news is, is that the projections are very favorable for us. In fact, I think he was too optimistic with our committee. You know, he was saying that, you know, three to four years from now, we're going to have so much money saved up. Remember, at the meeting, he said that about dental? And I was like, whoa, 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 here, let's. I mean, so he's, he's that positive on dental because he knows that these numbers are more fixed. So the good news is, we're seeing savings that are in our self-funded dental as well. So again, I just wanted to give you some insight that we're seeing some very good results. And at our next board meeting, we'll be bringing back a recommendation to use a board and we'll have more information that I'll include in a board packet with you, but it's a pretty big decision for us. The other thing under superintendent report, and we gave you just a sample. We borrowed this from another school district on Raptor Technologies. We haven't finalized this yet, but this eventually will be going out to parents. We're going to be starting here shortly. And because we're on cable television, this gives me the opportunity to again talk about increasing the safety in our schools and ask some of you to bring your driver's license with you. We only need to do one or two. But Deanna will walk us through it. But basically as you come into, basically as you come into McCullough or you come into Pinecrest or the high school, if Vince says, I'm just here to drop off lunch for my daughter, he's not going to have to scan. If he's just that, hey, my daughter's coming down, I'm going to bring her to a dental appointment, he's not going to have to scan. But if Scott says, I'm here, I'm here to watch my son for an hour, he's a visitor, he's going to have to scan. So basically, Deanna, take it away.
Well, Vince would walk in, he'd present his state-issued ID. And in the time that it takes to go through this, it's scanned through a 50-state sex offender database that Raptor actually keeps track of. There's no individual sex offender mass database, but what they do is they compile all 50 states into one database. And it checks this person who just signed in. No red flags went on, so Vince is good. And at that point, then the person would just hit submit and print. And at that point, Vince can go in.
Oh, cool.
Has a picture on there. Has a picture on it. It has, I didn't do it on Vince, but when I put Scott's through, I will, um, it allows us to also say where they're going, so.
You okay with your birthday being up there for the public to see?
Knock yourself off. I'll, I'll be expecting something nice.
Sorry, Vince, I didn't ask you.
Um, the beauty of it is that this now matches what, who's signed in. You know, before you could go to the high school, sign in. We don't really know for sure if you are, who you say you are. I'm sure in most cases, people are. So for instance, in this case, maybe, um, where do you want to go, Scott?
I want to go on a field trip.
You want to go on a field trip?
Yes.
Okay. So now when his gets printed out, it will actually say field trip. Then at the end of the day, or the beauty of this is it's web-based. So the software only has to be on this computer because it has this hardware. But all the principals will be able to sign in and they'll be able to click and see who's in their building. I preloaded some people in here. So right now, if I was Matt Estrebi, because I used McCullough as my test drive here, I'd be able to see that all these people are in the building. There's a lot of uses for that. Just for one thing, principals now can know who's in their building. Maybe there's a parent that they've been trying to talk to and so they can check this and see, oh, hey, that's cool. Jen Seabert's in the building and I need to talk to her anyway. The other thing is it doesn't just scan through the sex offender. I mean, that's a pretty important piece of it. But we can also put our own people into it. So say we have non-custodial parents who have orders of protection and this way we'll be alerted if they would come and try to pick a student up. It also has a volunteer component. So a volunteer comes in and signs in. It now checks them with the same sex offender database. But in the virtual volunteer side of it, it also allows us to flag them for activities that they might want to volunteer for. So if they have an interest in being a mentor, then a principal could go in and he could pull all the volunteers from his building and he could see, oh, who's all interested in being a mentor. It also lets them go in, the volunteer then can go in to the virtual volunteer side of it. They can put their interests in and it keeps track of how many hours they volunteered. It lets the building principal know how many hours of volunteer time they've had and in what areas. So there's a lot of diversity. And I think it's nice too that it also scans those volunteers the same way it scans any visitor coming into the building, so.
So you were class of 81 too, huh? Or no, you were.
I was not the class of 81. I was the class of 82.
Okay.
I forgot my, I forgot my birthday was going to be up there. I got to put mine.
What was your class time?
The other, the other thing is that when, yeah, I'm not going to answer that. Is that when you're done, when Vince is done, we want to make sure he leaves the building.
Yes.
They check back in. And so Vince is done, he turns back in his thing. Or even if he doesn't, if he really loves this picture and wants to wear it into Walmart. Anyway, he would just, we'd just sign him out and then he disappears from the list. The other thing is that the principals can go in and they, at the end of the day, they can still go in and see everybody that was in their building for the day. So for instance, as people start to pick students up, like, not your regular, like, everyone would know Lisa in the Pinecrest office and when she comes to pick her student up. But when a different person comes in, someone who is not familiar to the staff, they would scan them in, they would know that they were okay, they would check them against their emergency list where they have who can pick a student up. And then at the end of the day, if for some reason, this little guy doesn't show up where he's supposed to be, we're like, well, we know who picked him up and this is when you picked him up and here we know that he was on the list. So it gives us a few more safeguards for.
It's legible, accurate information rather than a sign-in, sign-out sheet.
Exactly.
So Lisa and myself and Teresa have been doing that Lunch Buddies for a few years. There's always kind of this delay at the beginning of the year, get all that background check done. Is that going to be this easy? I mean, is it going to go like that? Or is that more an extensive background check?
I missed your background.
I think the, I think the Lunch Buddies delay has nothing to do with our side. It has to do with the, with the custodial adult on the student side getting their paperwork.
Oh, okay.
I agreed to allow my student to go and participate in Lunch, at least that was the case with our.
Okay, alright. I thought it was.
You're talking at the very beginning of the year when you guys go up to the high school?
No, there was.
This is a middle school program, kind of mentoring lunch program.
Oh, okay.
Just to kind of go through, and maybe this hasn't been discussed fully, but if somebody does pop up with some negatives.
Good question.
Law enforcement going to be notified or?
I, yeah, great question. It has a couple of safeguards. First of all, if someone pops up, yep, it automatically, we tool it to notify whoever we want. We've already talked about that the school liaison officer would be probably on everyone's list. The building principal on everyone, you know, and each individual building is custom to their building. So the McCullough people, it would go to David Bauer, our liaison officer, and then to Matt, and then to whoever else we would think maybe should need to know that. Maybe someone in this office, maybe the building nurse, you know, we have to kind of think through that piece of it. The other thing that's really nice about this is it has silent alarm on it. So I already closed the, the window, but on the window, and you might have noticed it in the bottom right-hand corner, it said emergency. There is a red button there. So if for some reason, not only does someone come in and they maybe aren't a sex offender, they haven't been flagged, but they seem odd or they seem very agitated, for some reason, the person at the desk just doesn't maybe think that they should be in the building, they can hit that and same thing happens. The liaison officer will be called, the building principal will be called. So it's, it can work kind of in tandem with our security system too.
Good. Good.
Yeah, example of that is very upset parent for whatever reason. Last year, I was at the middle school site, and I just happened to be walking by when a parent came to the receptionist area and was, let's just say, using some language that wasn't appropriate. I heard it, and because I was there, I was able to come in and say, "Can I help you?" I was administrator, but that would have been a prime example where that person would have said, you know, "Push the button, I don't need to deal with this. This person is screaming at me, and I, I can't help them." I think the other thing now, that once we get it going and start using it, and we're going to, I told you that all the schools that did this had some minimal complaints because somebody forgets their driver's license or whatever. We're going to talk through that of what, you know, they do on the first time that they're coming through. But overall, the school said that everybody appreciates it once they start using the system. I think the other thing that our policy committee now, once we get it up and going, we're going to have to say, "Does this, does this meet what we're looking for, for like a background check for somebody who's going to be on a field trip? Is this enough in our minds, or do we want to know?" I think, I think most of our concern was the sexual predator, or sexual something on your record. But our policy committee then will say, "Is that enough for that level of, of background check?" We're still going to do the more thorough background checks for volunteer coaches and those types of things. But under what umbrella will this now help, help us cover? The other thing that we can do, too, is like up at the high school, it's wonderful. There's walkers up there every day. They wear a button. So that's nice that they wear a button, but we've never done a check on them, are they a sexual predator? So do we have them scan and then put their, this on a, into an actual, you know, plastic thing that they can wear instead of their button? So that whenever they come up there to walk, if I'm the person checking it in, I see Vince O'Brien, I say, "Hey, Vince, thanks," and I go in and I plug in that he's in the building.
The system doesn't, once you're in the system, so if I, I put Scott in tonight. So he scanned his card in. So if the next time he comes in, he doesn't have his card, you just hit submit. You pull him up, and it will manually run his stuff again. He doesn't need to swipe that every time, once he's in the system.
It has the key, it needs to go run the search.
Right. So those walkers that might go up to the high school, they would probably get one. We wouldn't need to print them a badge every time, but they would need to check in every time.
I think that people kind of get used to this sort of thing. I had to do something really similar up at United Hospital when I was visiting someone up there. Went through, and they scanned my driver's license, gave me the same type of sticker ID. It was a really bad warped picture, and stuck it on me. And, you know, I checked out on my way out. So I think it's going to maybe get more commonplace.
And we have lots of people visiting our schools for just the quick in and out, where we don't need to do the security. I mean, a lot of people are coming to drop off the tennis shoes, or drop off whatever else.
Drop off whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's a lot more of that. And we have volunteers, but we, you know, a lot of our traffic is people, parents coming, aunts, uncles, grandmas, grandpas doing that. But do I believe that it's a good system? Absolutely. We believe that it's going to be a really good system, and you saw how long it took.
The other thing is that it'll be here at the district office, too. And in the past, we've never, we've allowed contractors and people, delivery people in our buildings, but we've really never known that they were necessarily safe, or that they should be here. So now, the contractors will also be required to sign in at the district office, and they'll have to be issued the same pass. And then people that are walking around in the hallways will see that pass, and they'll know that they're supposed to be there. It'll help, I think. People know, yeah, oh, wait, somebody's here that has no pass, and we don't know who they are. So they'll kind of stick out.
If they check out a student, is that a different, do they sign, "I'm taking so-and-so out," or will that eventually be linked up to the same?
Actually, the system has a checkout for students, but we haven't talked through that at this point. But it has the same thing.
Good question.
It has-
Well, I mean, you talked about checking out, because I'm not custodial parent or whatever.
It has the ability to check out, it actually has the ability to check staff in and out, too. So if we had itinerant staff, and we wanted them to check in and out at buildings, we could do it with staff as well.
We've had quite a bit of discussion. Staff doesn't know that yet, but they will be there watching this. You know, so like Mike Johnson said, not only do we have some staff that travel between buildings, but he'll have staff that want to run to Walmart to get science supplies, or want to run to Target, or whatever, or sometimes do the McDonald's run. And we're not opposed to that. But should they at least be scanning in and out, too, when they do that? So that if somebody then calls Mike Johnson or the secretary and says, "Hey, I'd like to, you know, talk to, I don't know, whoever, teacher A." And Mike can then quickly look and say, "Sorry, teacher A isn't here, I know where they're at." And then, of course, if we ever get in a situation with a violent intruder, then as law enforcement comes, they can say, "Well, who was in your building today?"
Or the fire alarms go off, and you need to evacuate the building. Well, how do you know everybody's out?
And because it's web-based, we could look at that from anywhere. So if we had a fire at the high school, and we needed to know who was all in the building, obviously, at the high school, they're not going to be in the building. But we can look here and say, oh, well, you had 27, you know, volunteers, and they were in these different areas.
So, the ease of it, we think it's going to work quite well. And we're going to start rolling it out here shortly. So thank you for volunteering your driver's license. And for those of you who didn't want it, smart move. Update on school board vacancy process. Just want to let you know that that closes this Friday. As of right now, we have three people from the community who said that they have an interest in filling Angie's position. And I think tonight, I would just like to talk about who wants to be. In the past, we had three people on the committee. Deanna sent them the three applicants, or access to the three applicants, and what they wrote down about themselves, et cetera. The committee then met with those individuals. And eventually, the committee brought forth Gordon Gathwright's name to the rest of the board at the next board meeting. So the question is for you as a board. Our next board meeting is February, I don't know, eighteenth. So sometime between January 29th and February 18th, for committee board members to get together, what some of their questions might be. They might use the same questions from the last time. So anyway, who would like to be on that committee? That's all we really need. And then youth, two or three can figure it out and pick a, pick a time, so.
Volunteers?
Well, I'm willing to, but I was on last time, so I'm more than willing to let others, you know, have their shot at doing that process.
Anybody that-
I'm kind of in the same place. I have a very tolerance for silence, so I tend to volunteer for a lot.
Yeah, it was me, you, and Angie.
Yeah. But it was interesting, and I'd be willing to do it again.
I was on the board last time, and it happened.
Do you want to do it? You should do it.
It would be fine, as long as there's someone, you know, that was, did it before, that'd be fine. I have no problem with it.
I'm fine, too.
Why don't the three of us do it this time?
Yeah, I'll send you the questions that we used. I think I've got copies of them.
So Kyle, Scott, and Vince. Okay. And Deanna, well, as soon as it closes, we'll get the information to the three of you, and-
Do we run their driver's licenses?
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, as they walk in for the interview, "Can I just see your driver's license?"
That's probably illegal. Thank you.
Yeah, and then just, I want to just add one more. Just let you know that Vision 2025, the three focus groups have met. They've narrowed down some of the things that they believe are priorities for each group. So now, we're going to bring it back to the advisory committee. And some of you are on the advisory committee. And we're looking to meet February 11th. Deanna will send that out tomorrow around 4:30. So that we'll meet with the advisory group, and then we'll roll into our, our work session on February 11th.
I didn't have any 2025 pieces on here for the upcoming item on the agenda for the committee structures. I don't know if that really fits or not.
I think it's running outside of the board.
Well, there should be board involvement in each of the levels of it. So I do think that it is, it is as relevant as some of the other committees that we list. I actually chose not to do it.
Were you talking about the committee list, or you're talking about the other business?
I'm talking about the upcoming, upcoming item number two, the school board committee structure for 2020, for 2015.
We have to, we should discuss this at a work session.
Okay. Yeah.
I just wanted to break the agenda.
So just to let you know, we're still moving on Vision 2025. And after it goes to the advisory committee, Vince and I haven't talked about this yet, but then at that point, it probably needs to come back to at least the board. And then after the board says, "Yeah, we agree with that." Then we'll probably have a community meeting. And then we'll start after the community meeting. Then the board will come back, and we'll then get a little bit more focused in on the, on the, on the three focused areas, which are, I was very pleased with, so. And, you know, I know the academic one is a more time-consuming. There's, there's a lot of more time on that than the other two committees. So I just wanted to share that.
And I think you also want to, we all, we all want to thank the people from the community who've taken part in these meetings for giving their time, their passion, their energy, their thoughts and ideas. Because it has been sort of fascinating, and it will be pretty informing as we go forward to, to have that process going on.
I don't know, but turned off that dog whistle.
So with that, that's the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Okay, this is the Dan Cader motion, the Dan Cader memorial.
It's going to be completely different this year.
Can you have a memorial motion?
It's not going to be my usual rant. In fact, you know what? I'm, I'm going to make the motion this year. How's, how's that with no editorial?
Shakespeare predicted that we all would flip-flop on our thoughts and feelings about things eventually.
Yeah, well, different year. It's a different year than when it was, when I was found this so bad. So I actually think it's pretty on the mark this time.
Yeah, this is the motion to approve a resolution directing the administration to make recommendations if necessary for reductions in programs, positions, and reasons therefore. And is this one we have to do a roll call on?
Yes.
I need a second, though.
It's a second, it's Exhibit A. Do we have a second?
I will second Dan. I know, I couldn't have pegged it.
And this is really a vehicle of law.
Yes. We do it every January.
I never, you know, well, I said it wasn't an editorial.
Yeah, thank you.
The exhibit. It's worded very negatively. And during years where we were actually adding money to our fund balance, I didn't think it was appropriate, appropriately worded. But since we're, you know, running a deficit, and we do need to make some adjustments, or right sizing, whatever you want to call it, yeah, it's appropriate this year, so.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Could we amend the motion to waive the reading?
Oh, yes, that would be a friendly amendment.
I think we have to do a roll call. Somebody else want to play clerk? Mike?
Sure.
I can do it.
Go ahead.
Dan Cader.
Yes.
Teresa Moes. Lisa Hadeen.
Yes.
Kyle Latch, yes. Scott Gergen.
Yes.
Vince O'Brien.
Okay, next up. Is the motion to approve the school board committee structure for 2015 with the committee assignments as shown?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll try to plug in the temporary person where it makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, depending on who that is, I mean, I'm thinking we might want to do some swapping, or something. Depending on what they're, what they're bringing to the party, so I'll speak.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we're being revisited by the pay equity report, which is another long document that was attached. Was there any, and I tried to look through it for this. Was there any bias in terms of gender? Because that seems to be the one thing you want to avoid. And I know that when we first had the study done, what, seven years ago or so, there was a slight red flag, I think, at the time.
Right, and since, you know, in 2007, we had to be Oakland, classify all of our staff. We've been in compliance since then. We pass again this year. But on the first test, we do fail. And if you fail on the first test, you can pass on the second test. The first test, all they do is take the number of male-dominated jobs and the number of female-dominated jobs. And they don't look at how many people are within each of those classifications, nor the pay difference. It's just a flat-out formula. Well, we had some of our classifications changed from balance to male. So that's why we failed on that. Then it goes to the T-test, which, that looks at the number of employees within groups. And is the pay difference $10, or is it $3,000? It looks at that, and we pass on that test. And then there's three more tests on the front page, and we pass on all those tests.
Do we have a motion to approve the pay equity report?
So move.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Charge change orders.
Yeah, this was a change order that we requested, so it's not-
You should probably approve it.
Yeah, we should approve it. It wasn't like it was a design concept or anything. It was something that we wanted added to the project, so I'm recommending approval.
Okay, and just so the people watching on TV understand, this is so Tim can get a golden toilet across the hallway.
With air conditioning.
Middle school chiller.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Maybe you should try to get a-
Yeah, what the heck, see if I can get it through.
No.
I don't think, I don't think the superintendent or the finance person will vote for it.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Next up, revisions to two position descriptions.
Yeah, I think I shared in an email. For years, as I've been working with the community head coordinators, I've always said that, the two people that were in the positions, an adult basic ed, and at that time, it was ECFE. It's now turned to ECP. I wish they would quit changing everything. I just learned what they mean. But I said that they require teacher licensure. They should be under a different contract because these coordinator positions do require teacher licensure. And everybody said that when one of these two people retired, we would like to change it. So I met with all six coordinators. Kim's done a lot of work then on making a community coordinator contract that's licensed for these two positions. And then the other four are under the non-licensed community coordinator contract. And I don't want to read through the entire contract because there's not a lot of changes. The main change for the licensed is that they will be paid. Benefits and pay will be based off the teacher's contract. But they are not members of the teacher union, and that's critical because both of these positions need to supervise other people. So Angie McGinnis will be hired later on into one of these positions. It requires teacher licensure for her to be in the position. So she'll be under licensed community coordinator contract. But she also has some staff underneath her that she supervises. So the pay is based off of it, the benefits are based off of it, and it allows her to supervise. And the coordinators did send, after meeting with the six coordinators, everybody involved, everybody impacted, sent me an email verifying that they agree with this change. So item number five is basically to say, we approved the revisions and how the job descriptions are worded for the adult basic ed and the early childhood programs coordinator. And then is to, then the second one is to approve the licensed community ed coordinator contract. And Angie will be hired under that immediately because she started last week technically. And this week, she's shadowing Missy. And then Gabby Postiglione, who is in the adult basic ed coordinator contract. We've all agreed to let her ride on that contract till June 31st. And then she'll- June 31st, and then she'll move on to that licensed community ed coordinator, coordinator contract on July 1st. So that's the background on both number five and six.
Important work. Do we have somebody to make the first motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the revisions to the adult basic ed coordinator and early childhood programs coordinator.
Thank you, anyone?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. How about the second one?
Yeah, well, go ahead.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, three nationally board-certified staff members?
Yes, and as you know, over the years, we haven't had a lot of people that are nationally board.
We used to have two.
Yeah, Pat Rabarchuk, and I can't remember who the second one is.
The person over here at Pinecrest, she's the one that accidentally tripped one time on the...
Mrs. Gartske.
Yes.
Becky Gartske.
And then, no, Lynette Hanson.
And Lynette Wayne used to be.
Yep, and Lynette Wayne used to be. Sue Fliegel, who just joined us this year, and then a name that you won't even recognize because we're hiring, we're actually hiring her tonight as well, as OT, and so it is, it's a really high achievement, because not many people do it, it, it takes a lot of work to get nationally certified, so.
Didn't we, we had a presentation at a work session or something, where Lynette and Becky, or maybe it was just Lynette, talked about the...
I think it was Lynette, yeah.
Process, yeah.
Yeah.
With a video, at that time fairly unique, evaluation process and all that.
Very unique, and then after, I believe, five years, you have to get recertified, and Pat Rabarchuk just finished being recertified again, so, very high recognition for them, so we're recommending that you accept it, and the reason you approve it is because within our contract, there is dollars that are tied if you're nationally board-certified within the teaching contract.
Anybody want to make the motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to congratulate Lynette, Sue, and Kristen.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Definitely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have a termination, next on the agenda.
And I realize that this is difficult for you as board members, because it's confidential information, and you have to rely on administrators to bring forth recommendations, and you know some bits and pieces of why administrators are bringing forth the recommendation, so having said that, because it's confidential information, I am recommending that you approve termination at this time.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then we have two retirements, 30 and 37 years respective.
Yep, Barbara Nann, both very dedicated and loyal employees for a few decades now.
Anybody want to...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion, other than to thank them?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and we have six people in a motion to approve leaves.
I'll make the motion.
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then we have three resignations.
I'll make that motion, accept those resignations.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm just wondering if we're in a bind, because they're all at the same position and two at the same site.
Do we know any?
Actually, not really, in fact, Dave Haveman's been meeting with some people about moving some people too for coverage.
Okay.
So, I guess, I guess that, some of the people, I shouldn't laugh about, but some of the people have to move, might say, yeah, they're in a bind, because they maybe didn't want to move, but I think that's also part of Dave analyzing how many hours each site should have had, which I applaud him for doing, so, so, short answer, no, I think we're gonna be fine.
Okay. And we have the motion to accept those.
Yeah, so moved.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we had them.
We just need to vote.
Yeah, we're in discussion.
We just need to vote.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Oh, and then we're already...
Yeah, on the employment following individuals, I think in an email I said that, that they weren't ads, and I misspoke on that, there is one that is an ad, Sarah Anderson, the second on the list, Dave came to me and, as our early childhood special ed numbers started to creep up, and Amy, Amy Bergy's actually the one that does that analysis, Dave comes in and sits down with me and shows how many more students we have in early childhood special services compared to what we had in other years, and so at that point, this was probably six weeks ago, I said, yeah, go ahead and advertise, so Sarah is an ad, but definitely Dave proved to me that we have that many more students in our early childhood than what we had last year at this time. All of the rest of them are replacements of resignations or retirements.
So we have six, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? What does ECP stand for?
Childhood program.
Now, if we don't approve that, will we get a board member back?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And a recall.
Yeah, this, this is an interesting one, because last spring at this time, ABE, we have several programs that ABE helps support, whether, we're looking at the Cochran House, we're looking at the jail, we're looking at ABE itself, or in other places, and so last spring, Bill Postiglione, in the position that he was in as a teaching assistant through community ed, wasn't needed, now as the numbers have grown, we need him in that position again, so we're recalling him to that position.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Recall. And then we have three dates coming up on other business.
I just want to let board members know that I plan on the February 11th work session for sure, having Mark Zuzik and the middle school staff here, I met Dave and I and Lisa, Mark and Justin were able to meet today, Joe got called out into some issues, so he couldn't stay with our meeting, but we had a very good two-hour meeting on some of the questions, and I don't want to say concerns, I'll just say questions, because as we've restructured the middle school, and it was some very good dialogue, and I told Mark that I wanted us to have some of that dialogue, and that board members would be interested in hearing some of that dialogue, that same dialogue that we had, so on the 11th, that definitely will be one of the big portions, I'll also look to invite in some chairs again, department chairs, or special organizations or groups at that time, so, I know the middle school will be a pretty lengthy discussions, and I told Mark, it's not that the board or I have these huge concerns, but whenever we transition, we want to tend to hear how's it going? And it's tough to, you know, after five or six months with anything, it's really hard to say great one way or the other, but that'll be most of the work session on the 11th.
And one thing I just want to mention is that Hastings Reads, this, the adult book coming up, and I think the discussions are scheduled for February, is a book called Orphan Train by Christina Baker Klein, started reading it, it seems like a really good book, well-written, and it's a good story too, if anybody's interested, the high school I know really gets behind it, and I think the middle school does to some extent too, on these, so, again, the book is called The Orphan Train.
Sounds like kind of a dollar.
It's not.
Is it not?
Well, it's a little dark in the middle.
Okay, but not, okay, in the middle, that's fine.
It's very, it's very redeeming.
Okay.
Feelings.
So I should give it a chance.
Yeah, just give it a chance.
It's an happily ever after, I think that's what he's going for.
That's what I like.
Carrie came and presented to the foundation board the other night, and it, it is really impressive, when I, when I thought of everything Hastings Reads has done.
It's amazing. You get national...
Yeah, it's...
...level authors to come in and speak.
It is really mind-blowing what they have done, and she talked about the orphan trains in Minnesota, used to be a destination for the orphan trains from New York, because families, well, unfortunately, back in that time, they would take some of the orphans to work on their farms, or help raise their large families, that was part of it as well, but anyway, it looks really good, what they have set up again, so thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, I don't participate every year, but the years I do, I'm so thankful that I did, you know, it's just, it's nice to read a book with a large group like that and get together for discussion, have a chance to meet the author, you know, it's good.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, adjourned.
Can you tell us?
In the committee, what, what questions?
He just needs a new battery.
I don't know, I don't know if that was saving us from the wheel.